Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council into order. It is Monday, August 21st, 2021, and this is for a council work session. NASTRA City Recorder, call roll.
Councillor Kohler.
Here.
Councillor Reed.
Here.
Councillor Herrera.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Councillor President Smith.
Here.
Councillor Day.
Here.
And Councillor Duran.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we're going to start our discussion, as many government agencies are doing around ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. I had a different acronym in my head, but whatever, rescue and recovery. Anyway, it's money, but it has strings because it's federal. And we need to understand what those things are, what we can use it for, what the timeframes are, and all of that good stuff before we go and write checks that we can't. But more importantly, in every discussion I've been in, state, county, and local, and with individuals in our community, they expect that we will do what we have always done, and that is look at every single dollar and the value that we can get out of that dollar for the benefit of the people of Kaiser long term. So with that framework in mind, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Herr and Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Microphone.
Yep. Sorry, having to adjust to a whole new way of doing things these days. I think you're all aware that our Finance Director, Mr. Wood, has been on top of the ARPA plan. It's not really a new process. It's one that's been discussed for some time. And so, because of that, he's going to take the lead on making a presentation on the plan, and we'll then have the discussion will be yours.
Thank you. Just a reminder, this is a work session, so we can't take any official action tonight. We won't be taking any votes. The primary reason we're getting together is to kind of go over the ARPA Act, go through some of the highlights of that. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on a lot of the little minute details. More importantly, it's really to get some feedback from you folks of what kind of a process we want to have going forward and how we can spend these. This is a preliminary meeting. I anticipate this may be one of many. It could be, could be many, it could be a few, depending on the direction that you folks want to go. Really, the primary will be focusing on the process going forward and how we want to do that. Just as a reminder, I did check the bank account tonight, and I'm happy to say I saw an pending transaction for 4.4 million going into our bank account. So I'm kind of excited about that in my account kind of way, but be, rest assured, I can't spend a dime of it. I can't do anything with it until I get approval from you folks, either through a supplemental budget or through the Budget Committee and hearing process. So that money is going to sit nicely in our local government investment pool account and draw interest at about 0.2% or something like that. It's an ungodly low number. When I first started with the city, the interest rate was in the fours and fives, and it was significant enough, we would talk about it at Budget Committee hearing time. Nowadays, it's really nothing. It's just more just rounding issues. So with that, like I said, the primary emphasis is going to be going over the plan, looking at some of the important deadlines that we have to consider, also look at council considerations and next steps of, that's where you'll give us some of the impact, the feedback of how you want to move forward with this. And we've started to put together a list of some potential projects. This is not by any means a complete list, and it's also open for a lot of input from you folks. Also, at some point, I anticipate we'll probably have input from the Budget Committee and even possibly citizen members, residents of Kaiser. So there will be opportunities going forward for additional input from everyone involved. So kind of a big overview. The American Rescue Plan Act was enacted March 11th, and in total, it encompasses 1.9 trillion dollars. That's a lot of zeros at the end. There's several different things that impact us as a city, but also us personally, also county and states. A lot of the money has been earmarked for different projects. So if you look at this, the upper left column, the upper left box, that's all the stimulus checks. So probably a lot of asylum stimulus checks come in the mail to us or were direct deposited into our bank accounts. That was 410 billion roughly. Right below that is the state and local fiscal recovery funds, and that's the 350 billion. And that's primarily where we're going to spend most of our time tonight. But keep in mind that there's also the extended unemployment benefits. There's also pieces going to education. There's also the tax credits, most notable, the child tax credit that got increased. There's money earmarked for health, earmarked for small business, for COVID relief-related policies, small business support, veteran affairs, restaurants, agriculture. They've kind of pieced this all out. So one of the things that we need to keep in mind as we're looking at all this money, this really is a kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us. We're not going to get 8.8 million dollars every year. This is one-time money that we're going to be dealing with. So we need to be careful with how we spend it, so we don't allocate it to things that potentially could be funded through other revenue sources. So we could go out right now and say, oh, we want to go help all of the rental, people, renters in the community. But Marion County already has a program for that, and they have 10 million dollars for it. So if we were to throw our dollars at it first before we use the Marion County dollars, which are specifically earmarked, that wouldn't be the Kaiser way of us maximizing our benefit. So we've got to be pretty careful when we start thinking about how we're going to allocate some of this stuff, that we're not overlapping with other revenue sources. Also, with this American Rescue Plan Act, it has a lot longer timeline. When we're talking about the CARES Act previously, that was the 1.1 million the city received over the last year. We had about a year to spend most of that. With this, we have really about five budget cycles to spend all of it, although we do have to have a committee within about three budget cycles. So we have a lot of time to think about this and do what we want to maximize the benefit for the residents.
Councillor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam. I'm just curious, what would be other? It said 40 billion for other. I mean, improvement's good, everything, business, transportation.
I don't know the specifics of that, but I think that's probably if they identify...I don't have an answer for you. I'm not sure what the other includes. It's probably a slop or anything that they...
They're fixing the other box.
Yeah, couldn't figure out where to put it, so. So as I was indicating, there's a lot of different ways that the money will come and flow into our community. And there's going to be direct payments to states, to certain cities. The city of Kaiser, based off of our population, we're considered a non-entitlement city. So that means we don't receive our money directly from the federal government. Our money flows through the state and then from the state to us. Our allocation is based off of population. So they took our population and ranked that with all the other cities within Oregon, and that's how they decided how much we specifically get. Interesting note, we are the largest non-entitlement city, so we're number one as far as non-entitlements go. So, I don't know if that's bragging rights or not, but not interesting.
Somebody had to be right below the cut line. It just happened to us.
Well, it's interesting that I think Lebanon, which is smaller than us, actually is on the list and we're not. So I'm not sure how that works out. I think there's something specific to that region that they get involved with, so. Oh, okay.
They're considered part of the metropolitan area of Albany, which they don't necessarily agree with that, but they...
No, they don't.
Metropolitan.
There you go. I didn't know that.
Yeah, they're rather separated geographically, but yeah, that's the life of metropolitan statistical areas and MPOs, metropolitan planning organizations. But lucky us, we're part of Salem-Kaiser, MPO.
Okay.
I know. We should, anyway. We're number one. There we go.
So our allocation, our 8.8 million that we'll be getting over the next several years is part of that 350 billion state and local fiscal recovery funds. And again, our non-entitlement jurisdiction really defines some of the reporting that we'll have to do. We'll have probably quarterly reports that we'll have to remit to the federal government once we start spending some of this money. So there's going to be a lot of money headed our way, not just us, but to the region in total. And as I indicated, we need to be careful in how we start allocating some of our funds, so we don't overlap other jurisdictions that have resources that can be used for specific purposes. Marion County is going to be getting about 67 million directly, city of Salem, 34 million. We're at 8.8, then Woodburn dropped down to 5.8. We do do some consulting work for State and Turner and Almsville on the IT side, so I've included their numbers in there as well. We have intergovernmental agreements with them to provide them some limited support. The point being, all of these jurisdictions are going to be spending money in this region, so we're all going to be competing for contractors, for supplies, vendors, that kind of a thing. And so again, you know, more of a coordinated effort among all the jurisdictions might give the whole region a better impact overall. There's going to be a lot of demand, and I hate to say it, it's probably going to impact the pricing that we see from vendors as well. So there will be some strategy as far as timing. You know, do you go early and try to get the vendors before they're super busy, or do you kind of pace it out and try to straight-line it over the entire life of this project?
I did a quick search online of ARPA and the other category. It appears that about half of that is a direct allocation to tribal governments, and then there are a series of other smaller things. It looks like territories might be also getting an allocation.
Oh, sorry. 20 billion would be going to tribal governments and then smaller allocation to places like territories. And so, just a general idea of what the other category might include.
One of the areas that I didn't include on this is the school district. The school district is getting an allocation of funds, not through the same pot of money that we have, but through their own pot. And I've heard rumor that they're going to be getting close to 100 million. So that's going to be, again, a lot of dollars rolling into this community over the next three to five years. Marion County did apply and get some rent, emergency rental assistance funds, so they're getting an additional 10 million on top of their 67 million. And that 10 million goes for everyone in Marion County. And again, this would be an area where we wouldn't want to go out and necessarily do an emergency rental assistance program right now until Marion County uses up all those dedicated funds. Another thing that's on the horizon as well, Oregon Housing and Community Services are putting together a federal low-income household water assistance program. So again, we wouldn't want to necessarily go out and provide utility relief at this point until we figure out the specifics of that program. That one's still in the process. They have a few webinars coming up over the next two weeks that will provide a little bit more details on that program. So once we figure that out, we'll have information on our website and send that out to the community as far as what the requirements are to be able to tap some of those funds. So an overview of what we can use these funds for. The intent is to provide support to state and local governments, also tribal governments, to respond to the impact of COVID-19 and the efforts to contain COVID-19. This is really built off of the CARES Act, which again was last year's funding. The majority of what we could spend the CARES dollars on does roll over into this program, so we can continue to do some of the projects that we had done in the past. So in the past, we did do some utility assistance. We did some improvements to our technology to promote teleworking, and we did some improvements to our software packages so that we could work remotely. We could work in more of a paperless type of environment. Some of those projects are still continuing on, so we're not quite finished with all of those yet. As far as the city goes, though, for us, when we talk about what happened, the negative impacts, really, our event center was shuttered, and we ended up laying off two employees. And we had two employees that were on hold, two police positions that were on hold that we didn't backfill. Our gas tax took a significant hit. Our transient occupancy tax took a big hit. We did have some spending that we didn't anticipate. We need to do like the office remodel, those kind of things to prevent the spread of COVID. So those are the kind of things that we're recovering from. And within this Act, there's four specific areas that they call out, really to respond to the public health emergency and its negative impact. Again, that's the continuation of the CARES Act. Anything we could do there, we can pretty much do here. It also provides an incentive for those who continue to work throughout the pandemic. It gives us the opportunity to provide premium pay to eligible workers. This is typically lower-income kind of folks. They highlight restaurants. They highlight grocery store clerks, some of those essential people that kept going. In some of the agencies that we're seeing, they are starting to offer, you know, bonuses to certain city employees. I'm not sure. We'll have to have a discussion on if that's a direction that we choose to go as well. There's also a provision for reduction in revenues that were experienced by cities. This is largely a mathematical calculation, and I can go into a little bit of the details of that a little bit later. And then also, it gives us the opportunity to make investments into water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on that category, specifically because Bill Lawyer says he could take all 8.8 million and spend it. So that's, you know, that's anything related to the water system, related to the sewer system. With respect to broadband, we've had some conversations with Comcast, and unfortunately, I guess fortunately for us and fortunate for them, we're pretty much covered in Kaiser with broadband. There's not very many areas, except for maybe new subdivisions that are just going in now, that don't have access to broadband. So having said that, though, if you do know of areas that have slow connections or don't have connections, we're talking probably Wednesday, Tuesday kind of house areas, let the city know, and we can pass that on to the Comcast folks, and they can start working on that.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in terms of broadband, I know that that was a specific issue for, you know, for schools, you know, for students, and as well as people working at home. And Comcast provided some assistance programs for those kinds of things. Is that something that we could work in conjunction to fill in whatever blanks that were had? Because...
We certainly can. They do have a program for lower-income households where they can get Wi-Fi access. So we're working with the Comcast folks to get that information to the city, to the school districts.
Thank you.
So again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the investment in water, sewer, broadband. Just know that we could spend all the money there if we so choose. The benefit of spending money there is that it would prevent future rate increases. So if we do all of our master plan work associated with the water system, with the sewer system, that really would slow down the potential increases of rates in the future. So there is some benefit there. However, that may or may not be the best use of the funds. We'll have to have conversations about that. So to move on, I'm going to do a little bit deeper dive into some of these categories to figure out some of the specific uses that we could use these for. First category to respond to the public health emergency. Really, this is, I feel like this is almost more geared toward a hospital or even a health department. It has a lot of your traditional vaccination, medical expenses, testing, those kind of things. For us, with the money that we did receive in the past, it was primarily PPE purchasing, so a lot of masks, hand sanitizer. We've gone through lots of hand sanitizer. Also, the office remodel here, as we worked on improving the ventilation systems to separate the air from our residents and from our worker bees. So I won't spend a lot more time on that. Again, the next one, services to address behavioral healthcare needs. Again, this is more hospital, health department kind of focus. So if we had a mental health treatment facility, we could be spending money there. Crisis intervention, those kind of things. These categories don't necessarily really apply to us as a city with the services that we provide. One of the changes from the CARES Act to the ARPA Act, under the CARES Act, we could just say, public safety, you're important right now. We're just going to allocate a certain portion of your costs, your payroll costs, as an eligible fund, eligible use of these funds. Under the ARPA, we actually have to do work. We have to go back and keep track of time and say, okay, police officer so-and-so spent four hours on this day doing COVID-19-related tasks. So we can take those, and as we track those, we can get reimbursed for those. We can use ARPA funds for those. And again, that's different. In CARES Act, we could just take a broad swipe and say, okay, 10%, 20% of patrol costs or whatever is eligible for these funds.
Question, Tim. So on something like that, with our police department, there would be a cost involved with tracking those activities and billing it out appropriately. So I think there'll have to be a kind of a cost benefit. Is it worth it? Are we talking about big chunks of time based on the call volume specifically related to COVID? It's not like the fire district where they can code their medical response calls pretty easily. I'm not getting that public safety would fall into that same unless I'm missing something.
They do take fairly well, fairly good, they keep fairly good records. So yeah, we will have to go back and dig through those records, and we'll probably have to modify our payroll system to track those as we go.
Okay. But there's a way to code it that would not be overly burdensome, you know, spending dollars to get pennies? We don't want it again upside down.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to address the negative impacts, this is where it gets a little more exciting for us as a city. Delivering assistance to workers and families, we did do $300,000 of CARES funds for liability, mortgage, rental assistance. So we do have a track record of that. Supporting small businesses, we did do $60,000 in grants. Unfortunately, we didn't give away all the money we had. We had some funds that we actually had to give back to, I believe it was Business Oregon, just because we didn't get enough interest in people wanting the funds. And that could have been because of the constraints at the time. We'll have a little bit more flexibility if we want to do those kind of things going forward, especially if we put up our own program with the funds that we have. But again, there is an allocation directly for small business that is coming from the federal government. So we'll kind of have to wait and see on that to see what kind of a program that they roll out for folks. Again, for us, we did do a lot of investment into IT for teleworking. We can continue to do that if we so choose. Lots of software upgrades to move to a more paperless process, so we're not sharing COVID with each other. So moving on, addressing more of the negative impacts. Again, this is going to get a little more exciting for us. We have some council goals with homelessness and affordable housing. This is the area where we can use some of these funds to do some of those kind of things. We can do housing vouchers, helping people get out of homelessness if they choose. This also is an area where we can address educational disparities. This would be somewhere where if we wanted to provide some support to a library, this would be an option that we could do that. Specifically, you know, focusing on educational equity, looking at tutoring, after-school programs, access to computers, those kind of things. They would fit very well with a library if we decided to go that direction. Promoting healthy childhood environments, we can focus on high-quality childcare. One of the things that we could do is provide grants to help existing childcare providers expand. I didn't realize this, but I guess if you get to a certain size, you have to have a sprinkler system. And most houses don't have sprinkler systems, and a lot of buildings don't have the right sprinkler systems. So if we were to provide grants to folks to improve facilities, we could start providing, make a dent in the childcare problem.
Question, kind of going with those last three you brought up, this is also opportunities for partnerships with agencies that provide those services, where we could look at the opportunities within Kaiser to make those sectors stronger, but work with people who are already really good at that. So these, these don't have to be standalone, I guess my question is, you don't have to have standalones. You can do these in partnerships, where you can build on the success and the strength and the knowledge of people who are doing a really good job. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. That would probably be my recommendation, if we can work with our regional partners like Marion County, city of Salem. We can also work with nonprofits, those kind of folks, and set up agreements. Again, our staffing is pretty limited, so the ability of us to put up a grant program is pretty limited. So we would likely turn maybe to the COG and say, hey, help us put together parameters for this, or something along those lines.
Obviously, more, you know, for example, the voucher program, that's not something we do. We contract for that, for the housing vouchers, because we don't run that program specifically. It wouldn't make sense for us to pull out and do a separate one because of all of the work involved with that, when we already have a good system that can help provide for that need. But if there's a way that Kaiser could be more helpful with that program and make it more robust, that's where we could come alongside and raise the quality for Kaiser residents specifically, but our area in general. That's the example that came to my mind.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. Councillor Day had a question.
So it says, "Address the negative impacts," and then you've listed all these on here on the screen. Where are you getting these negative impacts? Where did you get, is this something you came up with, or is this in the rule?
Most of these came actually from the Treasury, the U.S. Department of Treasury guidance that came out with the Act.
Because the problem is, and this may be a distinction without a difference, I don't know, but Section 601(c)(1) and Sub-A of the, of ARPA says to address the negative economic impacts. So I don't know if that makes a difference or not. It may not. I don't know if this is what, but that's my only concern is that this, I've got the statute right here, and it says negative economic impacts. I just, my concern is, just so everyone is aware, subsection E of Section 603 of the Act says that if we spend this in violation of the Act, we have to pay whatever we misspent back. So I just want to make sure that we're 100% clear that this is all okay. That's my only concern.
Councillor Day, you're exactly 100% correct. So these all came from the, I believe it's the FAQ that the U.S. Treasury Department issued, so.
So it wasn't from the rule, though? That's my question.
Probably not from the rule, because I don't think they would go into this level of detail in the rule itself.
So if I, to your point of a difference without distinction, as we're going through this process, as ideas begin to bubble up into what we would like to pursue, that's when the research will go into the specifics, what we can and can't spend it on. And by that time, more of the guidance will have come out regarding the rules and so forth. So your point is well taken. And so by throwing all of these things out there, we start honing it down before we can spend anything. You can be assured of that.
I don't want to be in a circumstance where we have to pay it back.
Yeah, no.
But I, but I think the mayor's point is well taken as well. The idea that we can let other municipalities be the guinea pig.
You mean, we don't want to be one number one?
Yeah, exactly. Let them stick their neck out, see, make sure that everything's okay. That can help us too, I think.
Well, I think there's going to be a lot of learning that goes with this, because this is a first time on something like this, at least in our lifetime, and probably, probably the last one. But to that point, that there is going to be a lot of checking back in. So anytime you're doing this, any type of work with federal funds, you know, dotting all of the Is, crossing all those Ts, and double-checking, is something you do all along the way. So in my day work, I do a lot of contracting, federal contracting, specific to... to airports. And that's exactly how we make sure that we are keeping within the parameters of requirements for the expenditure of those funds, so we don't get sideways with the FAA, because that's a very expensive way to pay things back. So it's a good, you know, good thing to keep in mind. We can throw a lot of things out there, a lot of ideas, and then as we go along, we're gonna find out, this'll work, this'll work if we change it somewhat, this won't work.
I agree 100%.
All right. Okay.
So again, as I talk about replacing lost public sector revenue, for us as a city, obviously, it's the civic center. That was our big hit. We have had zero revenue generated there for a long time. TOT tax also was cut in half, and we also lost some gas tax. Those are the main hits that we have. We had a few others as well. We're actually gonna benefit a little bit out of this. This is really a mathematical formula that the Treasury Department has come up with, and it's based off of a 4.1% national average for revenue growth. And to be honest, I would love 4.1% growth revenue. That looks really exciting to me, given our, some of our revenue growth or declines, and some of our things, specifically property taxes, we're closer to 3%. So we're gonna see a fairly big picket. Going through the calculation, it shows that we have about 1.5 million in lost revenue. So we'll be able to take that 1.5 million and have a lot more latitude as far as what we can use those funds for. They're not necessarily tied to the economic response, recovery kind of things. But again, as we get to that point, we'll have to cipher through all of the details and make sure that we're all even keel.
Oh, Counselor Reed, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, so this last budget, though, we did, we did pass with that 1.5 deficit in revenue reflected in that, right?
We did our best bet as far as where we thought revenues would be. As I recall, I think we're actually flat with the previous year. So we, we didn't actually see a 1.1, 1.5 million dollar reduction. We saw probably closer to 600,000 overall.
Okay. And budgeted accordingly for this coming year. Okay.
But again, this is a standardized formula that we have to go through based off of the entire entity-wide revenues that we have as a city. And then they adjusted that for the 4.1% inflation. So I was kind of startled when I saw the first number, and I did it about four more times, and I still came up with about the same number.
Just to clarify, too, the budget would not have to show a 1.5 million dollar reduction. Because you're, in addition to money that you didn't spend, you're also getting the value of money that you didn't receive, and therefore would not have budgeted. So it's not as simple as just a 1.5 million dollars less, and that has to appear in your budget.
It was actually a rather awkward thing, because they did it over a calendar year, and we're actually a fiscal year. So I had to, I had to do math, and it was painful.
Better you than me.
I even did it on a Friday. It was terrible.
Oh, Friday afternoon math. You are a brave man.
Yeah, we'll have to triple-check that one.
Your staff will.
Other areas, providing premium pay for essential workers. And like I indicated, it's a lot of the lower-paid people that continue to show up to work. So we'll have to have conversations about this, if this is a path that we want to go down, and what kind of program that we might put in place. And I did indicate there are some jurisdictions that were providing incentive bonuses for city employees or agency employees, that we're working in the office, not remotely, that kind of a thing. So again, you know, that's gonna be pretty far down the path when we start talking about that, so.
So a question on that. So I just heard what you said from the point of view of employees for the city. What I read on that slide was that some cities, other jurisdictions, are actually creating programs in partnership with their workforce development, like we have a Workforce Partnership, or SEDCORE, or something like that, in order to get some funds out into businesses in particular sectors.
That is correct. Again, it wouldn't necessarily go to the businesses, it would go to the employees of those businesses.
Right. But to identify those businesses and to make sure that it's meeting the need of a particular sector that was economically disadvantaged, is that right, or are we talking about individuals?
It's, well, it's more designed for the essential workers, so the people like truck drivers that continue to drive, staff at nursing homes, those kind of things.
So it is by sector?
So, yeah.
Okay. Employment sector and job descriptions?
Yes.
To some extent. And it's almost, it's kind of more illustrative, because this is something that, just thinking about Kaiser, that we'd be more likely to partner with county economic development and Workforce Partnership, and looking whether we could actually participate in economic recovery in those sectors, especially the ones that were disparate based on race, ethnicity, underrepresented. You know, there's certain categories where it could have a significant impact, but that would be something, working with partnership rather than trying to do it solo. I don't think that that would be something that would benefit as many people, possibly. But let's keep that in the back of our heads, or in the front.
I do like that idea of partnering, because I would see this as being pretty intensive as far as staff time, trying to develop a program to put together.
Counselor Day?
So I just want to make sure that we're clear on all of this, because when I read through this, I, I thought, wow, that's awfully generous. But then I looked through the actual law, and what, again, I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but it actually says, for the provision of government services to the extent of the, or excuse me, to respond to workers performing essential work during the pandemic by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the non-entitlement unit of local government. So we provide, we can provide it to employees, eligible workers of the city of Kaiser, or we can provide grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. So it doesn't say that we can provide it directly to the employees.
Right. And that's what I'm talking about, SEDCORE and Workforce Partnership. Yeah, looking at, if you were going to partner with a program in this region, they'd be the ones who would have that data to be able to, yes, that they would be able to run those kinds of grant programs, because they already have. They've already done that, that work. So just that, that sort of thought. Rather than try to invent a wheel by ourselves, we could probably get a lot more traction getting on one that is broader-based throughout the community, and that has already been in motion. You're gonna hear that a lot. Partnership, partnership. Leverage, leverage, for those who watch Pirates of the Caribbean, we have leverage.
For the city of Kaiser, it makes a lot of sense to partner.
Yep.
So unfortunately, there's some ineligible uses, and I think they wrote this slide for us accountants. It's all the things that I thought would have been great ideas.
I'll see that.
So we can't just pocket all the money and say, we're not gonna have our 2.0838 tax rate next year. We have to kind of keep that going forward, and we can't use that just to reduce taxes. And we can't make contributions to PERS. That would have been where I would have said, oh, let's do this.
Yeah, no joke. Take care of the PERS liability. Counselor Vares has the question.
It says, you can't make extraordinary contributions. That implies that you can't make so much contribution spend, is correct?
Correct. So for...
Hang on. Mr. Wood?
So for the regular contributions that are based off of employee gross wages that we're currently making now, we can continue to pay those and use, if it's for ineligible, so if we have police officers doing COVID-19 work, the 26% PERS contributions, all in with employee and employer, that 26%, we could be reimbursed using the ARPA funds.
So that's the entire wages and benefits package for that employee, is that correct?
Yep. It's a fully loaded reimbursement for those wages. But no, we can't just write a check for $11 million to PERS to pay off our entire obligation.
Especially when we only have 8.8 million. The math doesn't work. Counselor Day?
I don't know that I agree with that. It says here in subsection two, pension funds, it specifically sets it out, no metropolitan city, non-entitlement unit of local government, that's us, or county, may use funds available under this section for deposit into any pension fund, period. It's a pretty simple sentence, which is remarkable coming from Congress. But I don't know that I agree with you on that, that if we pay wages of an employee, for whatever reason, that we, it says very clearly, may not use funds made available under this section for deposit into any pension fund. I don't know that I agree with that.
So what we're gonna do is press pause on that one. That is gonna be a...
I'll get you some research on that.
But I think the bigger question is, could we use it for our PERS liability, which continues to hammer the heck out of our general fund, and take away our ability to be able to whip those dollars and take care of things locally? And I'm hearing the answer to that one, which is more Oregon problem, is no. Although buying down that for the future would have gotten us a whole lot farther ahead when it comes with the use of our general fund. So that larger question of no, you can't, is rats wish we could. But on the other, on how we compensate employees, that's gonna be a detail as we look at that going forward, that will be taken care of.
That's correct.
Okay.
We also can't use it to pay off our debt obligations, so that nice bridge that we have is still gonna be financed. That's okay, I guess. Can't use it for legal settlements or judgments. And the big one, if all of us accountants had our way, we would just put it all in financial reserves. We can't do that, so. We have to get the money into play, so. That's good for the residents of Kaiser, bad for us accountants.
Saving for that rainy day, right?
That's, that's right.
Okay. So any questions on the thou shalt nots? Okay.
All right. Moving on to important dates, really the ones that we need to keep our eye on. Like I indicated, I see the money almost in our bank account, so it's gonna be there tomorrow probably, or Wednesday, so that'll be exciting. And again, I can't spend a penny of it until I get approval either through a supplemental budget or through the Budget Hearing Committee process. December 31st, 2024, and we have to have all of the funds committed to projects. And we have to have it allocated and say, this is how we're using it. We don't have to actually spend it and push it out the door until December 31st, 2026. So this gives us about three budget cycles to figure out how we want to spend this, including the fiscal year we're currently in, and five budget cycles, including the year we're currently in, to spend it all. So we have a lot more time than we do with the CARES Act, so we can be much more intentional with how we spend these funds.
Any questions on the calendar? Good. Next steps.
So this is really where I would like to solicit some feedback from you folks. Again, we can't make any official decisions tonight, because this is a work session. But kind of the who, what, where, when, how do we want to go about deciding where we're gonna spend this money? Do we want to create a new process where we run this through that, some committee process? Do we want to just have it continue to flow through our existing budget process, long-range planning task force, budget committee, and then ultimately the city council approval, and keep it part of our normal budgeting cycle? Or do we want to do something different? And at what point do we want to have community engagement? If we keep with our existing process, there can be building community engagement through the budget committee hearings, and also through the budget hearing at the city council level. So we could be getting feedback that way. So I guess the question is, you know, who do we want to involve in the process, and at what point? With the CARES money, we came and said, hey, here's a preliminary plan of how we're gonna spend this. At the same time, we did a supplemental budget, and then we went gangbusters as fast as we can to try to spend that. That's not this process that I would recommend going forward. I do think it probably makes sense to continue with the budget process. That'll give us time to think about how we want to spend this, and we can do it in a deliberate manner. But with that, I'll throw it back to you folks if there's any thoughts on who to involve.
So one thing I'd like to lead off with is that the Long Range Planning Task Force, aka the Budget Committee, is made up of the same people. I've already done work sessions on the long-range plan for the city. We've already looked at resources, we've already looked at staffing and so forth. So I think that would be a very logical group to get together, because instead of the seven of us, there'll be 14. And these are people specifically who do budgeting for the city. So I think that a work session, or getting together with the Long Range Planning Task Force, bringing back the things that we discussed, I think we need to look at the plans we already have in place, see what works, and then begin to bring in some of the other concepts that we're starting to hear discussed for partnerships, and for investments in our community that people would like to find a way for us to do. But I think the Long Range Planning Task Force is gonna be, to me, a very logical next step, and I'll throw it out there. I hear the wheels turning. I know it's Monday. Mr. Wood?
So the Long Range Planning Task Force is next, scheduled to meet in March. Would we want to move that up a little bit?
They can meet more than once a year. Other duties as assigned, doesn't that apply to all of us? But I think that convening the task force to look at, again, this is long-range planning, and this is, definitely fits in that category, so I would like to bring them on board. Anybody, anybody disagree? Then for the, the second question was on local and regional impacts. I think that's where some of the conversations need to happen with community partners. We've been given some really good ideas on opportunities where we can come alongside our regional partners. Nobody in this region does anything by themselves, even Salem. And I think it's important for us to hear some of the ideas they have, because we might find some common ground where we could come alongside and say, you know, this is something that's gonna significantly benefit Kaiser. The one that's catching my attention should be no surprise to anybody, and that's on the affordable housing. And if there's ways to partner in putting together a regional plan to address affordable housing, and the entree for first-generation homebuyers, boy, you have my attention. Is that something Kaiser could do by itself? I don't think so. But is that something that we as a region need to address? Absolutely. So these are some of those opportunities, we might be able to explore some of those conversations. So that was one of my pet, not pet, but one of the things I'm very, very passionate about, is how can we address our billable lands, inventory, housing needs analysis? Counselor Day?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just curious, at what point do we involve the public?
That's where we're going next.
Okay. And I just want to throw this out there, too, just what my, my biggest concern is the recruitment section that says, if we spend this against the law, we gotta pay it back. That's the one thing I'm worried about. And when we start talking about local and regional coordination, or whatever partnerships, or whatever else, again, there's nothing in the Act that allows us, that I see that allows, of course, nothing that disallows, like pooling funds or anything like that. But I just want to make sure that whatever we do, so that I think this is a question that we need to have answered, either for the Long Range Planning Task Force, or whoever. Can we use this to enter into partnerships with our, our neighbors in the area, in the region, to get the most bang for our buck? You'd think, yes, but...
And Marion County has already started those conversations, just to...
I just want to make sure that we can do it.
Absolutely. We will get that question answered, and keep asking those questions, you know... You know, Tim's the accountant guy. The only one who's more worried about the details than a lawyer is an accountant.
I want the lawyers on my side.
So between the two of, but we all have that same concern that what we do is within the lines. But we also want to explore opportunities and not rush into something without knowing what our long-term obligations are going to be and what our long-term opportunities could be to leverage these funds for our region. Mr. Wood.
What might make sense and would actually give me the most comfort going forward is when we do get to the point where we decide how we're going to allocate this, we can reference whatever guidance that we're referring to. So with the CARES Act, they had an FAQ that they issued. And one of the things that we as accountants did is go through in every line, everything that we spent, we linked that back to whichever bullet point number that was. So I would anticipate we should probably do the same thing and we can do it ahead of time. So when we do come and ask to say, can we spend the money doing this? And we'll have already done that research. So I appreciate your caution.
Thank you, Mr. Hare.
I would just add that most cities, and I know it's true in Kaiser, it certainly was true in the places I've worked before, you recognize that you're going to be audited and that you actually, one of the purposes of your audit is to ensure that you're in conformance with federal requirements for use of federal funds. So there's a pretty well-established process to protect against what you're talking about. I mean, it's a, it's a very legitimate concern. It's one that we actually spend a fair amount of money to make sure we don't screw it up. But I think, I don't think you've ever had to pay any back, have you?
Nope, and I don't ever want to.
Knock on wood, there you go.
Seems like a bad career move right there.
So yeah, we will be very cognizant of that again. We can ask a lot of questions, we can bring forth a lot of ideas, but they will be filtered and they will be refined, make no mistake about it. So looking at our city along, oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there some projects that we want to do for the people in Kaiser that, that we could use some of these funds for?
Well, and that's, I guess, through that next phase, the public input. And we have representatives from a wonderful local organization for our community library that is listening to every single word about what we're talking about in terms of funding. And there are other organizations that have already contacted me, and I'm sure all of you, about, wouldn't it be cool if, or I think this would be great for Kaiser if. And we need to hear what those are and then we can, again, with our Long Range Planning Task Force, with community input, really begin to hone down and prioritize. So this isn't going to be, we're writing the checks tomorrow. We're not even writing the checks next week. So this is going to go through a process, looking at what are the needs of community to prioritize them and then allocate the funds in a very public process. That's what I, that's what I believe we're, the direction we're going to go in allocating these funds and taking through our budget process. Mr. Hare.
Having had experience in a city that received a very large amount of unanticipated revenue that had basically no strings attached to it, I think the challenge that you're going to face is not getting public input, it's trying to figure out how do you distinguish between good, better, and best?
Yeah.
Because there will be wonderful ideas presented to you, I can promise you, when you open it up to the public. And there will probably be so many wonderful ideas, at least that was certainly the case in the city I worked for, that, you know, it's really hard because you're having to say, well, these are very, every idea we've heard has some merit to it. You may have some organizations that have done a lot of the work on their own and they're just looking for a missing piece. You may have others who are just at a concept stage and need the money to get them off the ground. So it's not, I, I mean, I'm sure you probably have all thought of these things, but it's, it's not an easy process. And getting public, you know, commentary on it is, I think, a very necessary step. But, you know, the tough part is when you actually have to get down and make the decisions.
Well, I think your point is very well taken. I'm thinking a lot of grant programs that I've been involved with, they have criteria for ranking those projects. And you brought up two very key ones. One of them is that last dollar, last mile in transportation. You're looking at, what is that last piece? Is this going to finish a system? Is it going to finish a project? Is it going to get it to done? The other one is, what are the ongoing obligations? You know, does this project have ongoing obligations? Yes, no? If so, what does that look like in terms of funding stream? So you can build something, but can you maintain it? Can you operate it? So that's another, these are the types of questions I think we're going to have to put together. And this sounds like some more homework for giving us a framework and for people who are making the ask. It's really easy to come up with an idea and go, let's, let's do a show. I'm thinking the old, you know, Mickey Rooney and Judy Garland do movies where they would just do a show, they raised money and all was well with the world until the next week when the next bill came due, but that was the end of the movie. So we don't get that luxury, we have to keep going. So I think it's really good for us to have some parameters about what does this look like? What are the things we're going to ask people to bring? There are some organizations that are extremely well organized. They know what they need, they know why they need it, they know how they need it, they know how it could be staff-funded, et cetera, at least some ideas. And if we can give people an outline of what we believe would be in the best interest for the people of Kaiser to know about and hence for the Long Range Planning Task Force and the council to know about, that's going to help everybody raise the quality of the conversation. Now, there are grant programs for almost every sector that are out that we might be able to borrow from and put together a checklist of what we believe would be, help people in our community bring their best ideas, their best thought out. What would a process look like to get that information put together for us to look at? Or do you want some of us to work with staff on that? What are your thoughts? I don't want to make this like a list or a, like a grant program, which is very restrictive, but just give an idea of what is going to help us and help the community bring their thoughts together before they bring an idea and go, here you go, you do the work. Uh-uh. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think one of the first things we need to do is look at our long-term goals and see how that meshes with, with some of the parameters of these funds. Because most of our, or a lot of our long-term goals involve that, you know, the personnel, you know, you would need to be funded long after these funds are gone. But just taking a look at the long-term goals and seeing where those align with some of these parameters.
Okay. So how it already aligns with the long-range, our long-range goals, also some loans we've talked about, the task force. Long Range Planning Task Force, our resources, looking long-term. We've also talked about resources for the community, some of the one-and-dones we've been able to do that leap us ahead. I'm thinking our parks master plan, you know, are there projects we could do that would leapfrog us ahead in the, in actually going down a list of projects that need to be done in the parks, things like that, that are already in our master plans? Are there things we need to look at there that would make sense? I'm just throwing, some of this is rattling around my brain and I love the email. I found it because I printed it. Tim put together some really, really good ideas for prioritization, things to think about, and I think we need to put this back out there. Talking about relief efforts for residents and businesses, again, going back to the core of this. The preventative efforts, what we can do to strengthen our infrastructure for public health, not only in terms of pandemic, but also just in economic viability and equity. And you know, simple things or even more practical things like having touchless self-service options and refreshing the website so you have more services to residents. Restoring our city functions, as we talked about earlier. Long Range Planning Task Force will have some impact on that. Looking at the things that we took a hit on, TOT, the transient occupancy tax and this community center. Reinvesting in our street fund and investing in our city infrastructure. But in all of these things with the idea of a long-range benefit. So this does some things that Tim had shared, because I'd asked him for that because I was going into a meeting with Marion County. And another city shared, and I think I can share this with you all, I'll send it out. They've already had their, their first meeting, looking at economic goals and objectives and using that framework. They're starting to slot projects in those different categories that they might look at prioritizing to fund. So looking at our short-term and long-term goals, that might be a good place to start with. And then the criteria that we're going to ask people to come to us with, thinking these, many proposals through. Councillor Day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was outstanding presentation you made, that was, and Mr. Wood too. But what the mayor just said, explaining it, has really got my, my brain working. My question is, so one of the long-term, long-range goals is, and I'm just using this as an example, is the sidewalk gaps. And I don't know who the right person to ask this, if it's the mayor, Mr. Wood, Mr. Hare. But is there a way to figure out, like, okay, we, we fill in the sidewalk gaps and we, and we hire somebody, you know, from Kaiser, right? So we're, not only are we accomplishing that goal, we're helping a small business in Kaiser and maybe even a minority-owned or underserved business, somebody like that. So, you know, we kind of kill three birds with one stone. Does that make sense? Is that what I'm asking? Like maximizing the impact, is that, is that something we can do?
Yep.
Where is that public works director when you need him? The short answer is, I don't know. I mean, but I think, you know, those are the kinds of questions to be posing and to be thinking about now, you know? If you have it in your mind that, hey, this is something I'd like to see get done, then we can do the legwork to see whether or not it's going to qualify for the use of the funds. And your question was sort of multi-part there about, you know, can we use it for sidewalk infill? I, boy, I don't know. It didn't seem to fit neatly, but possibly, you know? I mean, and I think the starting point should always be, rather than no, is let's look into it and see what we can come up with.
Well, the idea, just following up on what the mayor said. The mayor said we have to be cognizant of, now, if we, if we do something, what are the costs going to be down the road? Well, we can flip it on its head and say, if we do something, is there some way of maximizing the benefit down the road? So here, here, you know, kind of a domino effect, if you will.
Well, and similarly, you know, we have gaps in our street lighting system, things like that, where that would benefit neighborhoods that have not put in a street lighting district because they were established well before the city was, became a city. So there are opportunities within our own infrastructure that would allow us to fill in gaps that aren't naturally going to fill in based on our development patterns. I'm thinking up in Wheatland, one of the reasons we're doing the multimodal corridor study right now is because those sidewalks are not likely to fill in based on our current development patterns. The development that is going to be done has been done and that's usually the impetus for putting in sidewalks and other improvements. So in order to make sure that we can actually make those improvements, fill in the gaps and do it right, that's why we're doing the study right now. And then we'll go after the funding to construct once we have the preferred alternative. But to your point, that's that bigger picture thinking where you're going, okay, here's an opportunity for providing infrastructure that benefits the entire community. It's great for the environment because you are providing the infrastructure to walk and bike. You are improving public health at the same time, you're improving safety. I mean, it, it hits on all sorts of levels, which is why I'm right there with you with being a big sidewalk fan. But that's the kind of thinking that will help us maximize what we can get from these dollars for jobs and infrastructure and something that doesn't just vaporize tomorrow. So I'm going to go back to the question I asked. What will it look like? And how can we help with preparing kind of an outline? Or I hate to use the word criteria because it sounds too formal. Direction on, if, if I want to bring a concept to the Long Range Planning Task Force, what should I be prepared to have already thought out to bring to you? Mr. Wood.
What might make sense is for me to take our current budget request form and do a significant upgrade to that to include some additional criteria, definition, some kind of a matrix, and then send that back to you folks to take a peek at before we get too far down the line. And that way you can see what kind of criteria. And I'll reach out to my accounting friends and see if they have other ideas that they're, they're thinking in their jurisdictions as well.
And maybe some other jurisdictions already have something out there that we can share. I don't know, but yeah, I don't like reinventing the wheel. Other thoughts on how we might? Because once we have that, then we can take that to people that we, throughout all of our contacts in the community, and talk about, what does this look like? And help answer questions or direct them back to Mr. Wood and start, really generate some well-thought-out ideas. And also find out where the partnerships are. Let's say somebody brings us a great plan for X, but we know that that's not something we're likely to do, but we do know the person at the county who's going to do that. And we can do some matchmaking there as well. That's where we get the leverage, if you will. So I think it's going to be really important for us to communicate, not only among us at the city, but also with all of our regional partners. Other thoughts? Everybody's, I know, just churning on this, going, hmm. Mr. Wood.
I guess to move the conversation forward as well, as established during our Long Range Planning Task Force, we do have a list of projects that have been on the wish list for a while. I've started to add a lot of the potentially ARPA-related projects to that list. So I will continue to do that. So if in the middle of the night you think of a great idea and you just want to send it to me, I will continue to add that to the list. And once we get our form established and everyone comfortable with it, then I can start probably cross-referencing those projects to that form so we can see what kind of impact we can have on the community.
Okay.
So again, if you folks have any projects that you can think of, please send me a quick email and I'll add it to the list. This also goes for residents of Kaiser. If you have things that, you know, you think of in the middle of the night, woodt@kaiser.org, and I will add it to the list. And I may have to circle back to some of you if I don't understand the project, so.
Councillor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't see a library on this list yet.
I heard it mentioned.
I do have it on my, I have it on my official list.
Yes.
Under the educational disparities is where that is most likely to hit.
Honestly, it's over here in my other pile of papers, so.
Yeah. No, but as you were talking about opportunities.
Right there.
There it is, yep. You know, and understanding too, you know, that, you know, there's going to be a lot of ideas and so forth that we'll have to really think through, as always, you know, the initial and the ongoing. Given the constraints that two oh eight per thousand isn't changing anytime soon, I haven't seen the legislature going, gee, we should really give cities the opportunity to have the conversation with themselves about their tax rates. So that's not changing. That's okay, Kaiser keeps on just making good stuff happen. All right, any other ideas? What did we miss?
Madam Mayor, if I may-
Mr. Hare.
Throw in my two cents. I think you've mentioned it and maybe even emphasized it, but it probably bears emphasis again or being repeated again. The notion of, you know, the council's desire to get public input on this and trying to figure out the best way to do that. What I heard was that you'd like to sort of start with a long-range planning group, which also, of course, is your budget committee, which, that's the seven of you plus- which also, of course, is your budget committee, which, that's the seven of you plus seven citizens, for people who aren't aware. And that that group would then probably have to come up with some way to try, I mean, I would discourage the notion of, let's just have people parade up in front of that group with ideas. What Mr. Wood has proposed is the idea of having people basically sort of apply, or have a, not, applies is the wrong word, but have a way of presenting their ideas that could then come before that body for deliberation and discussion. So that you have kind of an organized approach to hearing from people. But I'm sure that what folks want to hear is that the council is really committed to the idea of getting some public input on this and trying to deal with what is not an easy choice, or not going to be a series of easy choices, in a way that works best for everybody in Kaiser.
I would agree. And I think that's where the budget request, you know, making, enhancing that, bringing in ideas for criteria or questions that your proposal should address, things like that, that would help the Long Range Planning Task Force, A, understand the proposal being brought. And one of the things that needs to be on there that you won't see on the budget request is who might be other regional partners. So if there are partnership opportunities, if somebody's bringing a concept that has regional partnerships, that's going to be important to know. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think also, sort of under that same umbrella is matching grant opportunities. So if somebody has an idea that they could get funds from us and they could match it with other grants that are available, similar to the community partners, that that might be important to put as part of that process.
Counselor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, when we do the public input, how do you reach out to the Latino population or the Latino businesses? Or, I know that so a lot of Latino businesses already are in the loop as far as, with the cares. But I would like to say, somebody has an idea or something for a project, what efforts are going to be made to reach that community, part of the community, our community?
I think that once we have the outline of what we're looking for, make sure we translate it, and then reach out to Latino Business Alliance, to. Awami, the Oregon.
Not, no businesses are aligned with Latino businesses, not locally.
I am, but also Awami reaches a lot of local, a lot of entrepreneurs, both here and regionally. So there's other organizations and individuals that we can make sure that that is going to be a very widely dispersed document. So there'd be opportunity for everybody to be an ambassador, to get the word out. And then if people have questions on, what does this question mean? What kind of detail do you need? Or I don't understand. We're going to have to have a way of answering questions, but do it in a way that the answers are available to everyone. So FAQ, if we find that we're getting a lot of questions, make sure we post those on the website so we can continue to get that information out to everybody.
And as a follow-up, you know, Wes was talking about, Mr. Hare was talking about, you know, using the Long Range Budget Committee. And, you know, sometimes that's not representative of our community. Because I'm thinking to myself, that's the part where I think is important, as far as equity, make sure that all our communities are aware of what's going on here. I know there's some that are, believe me, I already talked to some. I just want to make sure that we reach out and make sure that we have the word out there so somebody, because everybody knows about the library, everybody knows about the little, our projects that are important, of course, home. And I think there's some out there that we're probably never going to hear, or I hope we will, you know what I'm saying? But I just want to make sure that we do a good job of reaching to the Spanish-speaking community in that sense. Because there's some, there's some interest out there, once they know the information, I believe, myself.
Well, I would agree. I've had some conversations with some individuals who have proposals they would like to bring forward. So this is going to be helpful, because they're very organized, they're very smart, and they can put together a good pack, a good proposal. So I'm looking forward to reading that. Other questions or comments? All right, do you have enough to go on?
I do, thank you.
Did we give you enough homework?
Wow. Now, this is, really is an exciting opportunity. I mean, this is once in a lifetime. I would not anticipate seeing this kind of money flow into Kaiser. This is a major opportunity for the city to move forward on a few things that we wouldn't have been able to do in the past. So I look forward to the ideas that everyone can bring to the table, so. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the next few pages. And those are just a listing of some ideas that have been on our wish list or have been added in the last six to nine months. So you can look those over. And again, if you have other things, feel free to send me a quick email, and I'll get working on some kind of a matrix and form to sort of evaluate some of these ideas. And I appreciate all of your time, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of the thought that's going to go into this so we can do a thoughtful process that will strengthen our community long-term. Anything else for the good of the order on this one? Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood, if you could help me understand a couple of things. On page 21, it says, "Projects Continued Revenue Loss, Revenue Replacement, Gas Revenue, Lost Revenue from School District Contracts." If we use these funds to reimburse that, where does the money go, really?
Well, we would have to say how we're using it. Again, this is part of that $1.5 million calculation. So we could say that we're supporting marketing efforts within the community center, those kind of things, or staffing, or police staffing, or, you know, with the gas tax revenue, we could potentially do some street improvements.
So that's different from the $8 million you're talking about?
Well, that is part of that $8 million. So 1.5 of that, 8.8 million is the allocation for revenue replacement.
For example, the portion of that that goes into the street fund, you could say, well, gee, we'd sort of given up on that money, it was lost, so we're going to, that's the one place where I think you could probably make a pretty strong argument if you said, oh, we want to put that into sidewalk replacement.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, any other questions? All right, so the time is 7:17, and the work session is adjourned. So what I'd like to do is take a five-minute break, and then we will convene the special session that gives us a chance to stretch our legs, have some coffee, and. We've got five minutes, please.
Are we doing that here?
Let's try it with the microphone on this time. Let's call the Kaiser City Council to order, it is Monday, August 23rd, 2021, in our special council meeting, and ask our city recorder to please call Raul for the record.
Counselor Kohler.
Here.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counsel President Smith.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
And Counselor Duran.
Thank you very much. Tonight was called at the request of myself, Counselor Day, and Counselor Kohler. We believe that it wasn't in the best interest of the city to wait three weeks to readdress the issue regarding hiring a recruitment company for the hiring of a permanent city manager. We love Wes, but we can't keep him forever. He's made that really clear. And, but, to respect everybody's time, it made sense to go ahead and finish the conversation that we were having during our last council meeting, answer questions that had arisen, and then get direction from council on what our next step is. So, we can answer some of the questions that were raised, or, and at the end of the day, our options are to go ahead with the proposal that we received from Prothman, and go forward with contract, or to go back out for another request for proposal for other proposers. So, basically, it comes down to that, and if there's any changes we want to make in the RFP. So, keep that in the back of your head. To start off, we had questions regarding the business registrations, and what kind of issue that is or is not, and Mr. Johnson, would you talk a little bit about that, what it is, what it isn't, and where we're at, please?
Yes, well, thank you, Madam Mayor. The requirement to register, and actually, the word is be authorized, which is just a ministerial act you just apply, authorized by the Secretary of State, simply says this: A foreign corporation may not transact business in the state unless it's been authorized to do so by the Secretary of State. And there's some exemptions, but I don't think Prothman applies. So, to be authorized to transact business in the state, they'd have to do so. But, it is not a crime if you don't do it, it's not a violation, it's not an infraction at all. There's no penalty if you don't. The only problem is if you're what they call a foreign corporation, which just means out of state, you can't sue someone in this state, in a transaction in the state. So, it'd be wise to preserve that right if you're outside to do so, but there's no penalty for not doing so. And I checked with colleagues, and they all said that that would be considered a minor informality, and it would be allowed to be corrected before you do the contract. So, you know, you can take the point of view that this is a failing of the company to not do so, however, most of the companies, and I didn't keep track, but the city manager kind of did a little poll, outside companies in this search field firm are not registered. So, I think it's important, and I agree with Counselor Day, that you do so. I actually had some colleagues say, yeah, we don't even require it. I disagree with that. To me, if you have a statute that says you gotta do it, as a private company, I would say to my client, I don't care, I mean, if the other side doesn't do it, but as a governmental agency, co-governmental agency with the state, I would say, look, you gotta follow what the law says, even if there is no penalty. But I don't think requiring it ahead of time as a prerequisite is necessarily critical, so.
So, in terms of business registry, which the Prothman Company, or whatever is the appropriate name for it, that has been, they have done so.
Yes, they have registered.
And then, looking at these recruitment companies, ones that have specific experience with the chief executive types of recruitments, the executive directors, and city managers, and so forth, that's a rather limited field nationwide, is it not?
It is, and the city manager can maybe talk about that with a little more detail, because he's checked into it.
Mr. Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know from the memo that I sent to the council, my recommendation is to go ahead and redo the RFP, because I really do think it's important that everyone feels, everyone on the council feels like they've been involved in the process, and I think that was the major complaint that I heard pretty clearly at the last meeting. And, there is a cost associated with that, it's primarily a cost of time, it'll take longer to go out and re-advertise and redo that process, but, again, if I were doing, you know, considering which values are most important, I think one of the most important is having some agreement among you as counselors about how you want to do this. Having said that, I think it's, I do think it's important that your criteria not be that a search firm is currently registered. And the reason I say that is not that I'm trying to promote SCOTF laws, the problem is, is that, and I think I included in your packet, a list of 40 firms that do recruitments for city managers. And, it's not exhaustive, there are some other firms that aren't even on that list, but as near as I could come up with in doing, you know, from my own experience and what have you, right now, the, I think it's SGR, Strategic Government Resources, out of Texas, is registered, Waldron is registered, but they no longer do city manager recruitments, they've moved into the social services field. There is one Oregon, well, two Oregon firms that, well, one Oregon firm that has actually done city manager recruitments, that did not respond to our RFP, apparently because of limited capacity, and then another firm, an Oregon firm, that did respond, but was deemed, but has never done a city manager recruitment. So, you'd have a very, very tiny pool of people to choose from if you say they must currently be registered. Well, and I should throw Prothman into that pool now, they are registered, but they were not. And, and just to give you a sense of why it might be important that you want a firm that has some experience in city manager recruitments, particularly in this region, I just got kind of a reminder of it over the weekend. I got an email from a guy I hadn't heard from for years, with a firm down in California, he's doing recruitments for city manager jobs, one in California, one in Arizona, and he said, oh, I just remember you from, you know, recruitment a while back, and I thought you'd be perfect in these jobs, which, I'm sure, you know, he probably says that to all the city managers. But, the point is, the point that I'm making is that one thing that these experienced firms can bring to you is the experience with managers who they know at one time or another were looking, and that they've actually interviewed and vetted and believed had the qualifications to do the job. Whereas somebody that's never done that, it's not that they aren't going to get qualified people, I mean, if you advertise on the ICMA list, you know, newsletter they call it, but job listing, basically, any city manager that's currently looking for a job is going to know that that's the place to look. I mean, that's just, I mean, it's, just goes without saying. It's the industry standard, exactly. What that won't get you, however, is sort of a proactive recruitment that a firm can actually bring, where they might know somebody who might have been thinking about it, but maybe needed a nudge, or maybe needed some additional information about the city, that sort of thing. And, you know, I think it makes some sense that you want to get as many people who have some level of experience in the field as possible to be considered, so that you have some legitimate choices to make, as opposed to, you know, dealing with a very tiny, tiny number. So, again, I'm, you know, I think, from a, from my perspective, it makes sense to go ahead and be as inclusive as possible with your process, but to not limit yourself so badly at the outset of that process that you're not able to get firms that have the experience and the capability to do a good job for you.
Thank you. Let me give you an example, I was on the selection committee for the Mid-Valley Council of Governments, the recruitment we did for the executive director. The company that was hired, I believe it was California, that did that recruitment for us, they not only brought us candidates that, with executive director experience, but also some that had related experience, that actually made it into the top five for interviewing, and presented extremely well, so, they hadn't been an executive director of a council of governments, but their, their experience was so broad, and so related, that they made very, very good candidates for us to look at, and give us some alternative points of view. So, this is something that an experienced company can do, that can recognize someone who's potentially an up-and-comer, or someone who has a related skill set, that would be a good community fit, and that's the other piece. As you all read through the RFP, the Request for Proposal, one of the things that the recruitment company will do, and this is the real key here, is the very thorough profile of the community, and how this individual will be expected to work in the community and with the city staff, moving our community forward. So, this is where the meat and potatoes really hits, is a company that knows how to do that. And having gone through three processes with three organizations, I can tell you that that process is where you really get your value. So, that's just my little soapbox experience. So, I've got two questions for council. Is the issue regarding business registration answered sufficiently for you? Are you satisfied with the company, whoever it is that is our successful proposer, registered prior to signing of the contract? Is it a, is that sufficient for you, or do you want a different benchmark? I'm looking at each of you. Good? No? I need an up or down here. Good, good, good. Counselor Day.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I guess I'm good with it. I just, it causes me a lot of concern that this company wasn't able to, I understand what Mr. Johnson said, I do this stuff for a living, I, it's never okay to say, well, everyone else does it, so we shouldn't do it. I disagree with what Mr. Johnson said, there actually is a penalty for not registering, or for not, for operating without authority, it's, when you get caught, you get to pay, it says, it says you gotta pay, you gotta pay, so, this is $2,405 that Prothman should have paid, but what they did instead was they registered as a domestic corporation, which is a hundred bucks, so they saved themselves $2,300, you know.
Good thinking.
Well.
However, is the question of having the company that we end up in a contract with, being registered to do business in Oregon.
And they are.
And they are, or anybody else, at, prior to signing any contract, is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. So, we are agreed. So, the parameters under which the current RFP went out, and the proposals were received, we are agreed that that parameter was met, under the current round, and that would not be, if we went out again, we would not change what we have in the RFP, is that correct? I'm looking for anybody to contradict if I got it wrong.
That's a good question, Madam Mayor, because the RFP says that we're gonna have a committee of five, and we had a committee of three.
Okay, I'm on the business registration.
Oh, okay.
So, are we good there?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Now, on the current RFP, we said we have a committee of five, and we had, we had, we would have five evaluators, I'm gonna use the word evaluator, because that's essentially what you're doing, and we ended up having three. So, is that, does the council want to go back out so we can have a review, a larger number, or a matching number of evaluators for the next round? Or, is what we did sufficient for you to see the rankings as they are, and be okay with the number one score being the number one score? I'm throwing this out there. So, it did not match, we said we're gonna have five evaluators, we had three, they got ranked, and that number one proposal was brought to you. Go.
The problem that I have is that we didn't get to see what the other two applicants were. I did get a chance to see Prothman, I don't know, you, for instance, scored higher than staff scored Prothman.
Yep, very, very close.
Yeah, well, still, and, you know, I kinda wanna know why, what was it that somebody who's just gone through the recruitment process with COG, would have a pretty good idea what it's gonna, what we're gonna need? Then I, you know, in terms of a selection company and a recruitment company, you know, that would carry a little, little weight with me. I mean, I'm, if everyone else on the council wants to go with Prothman, I'll go with them too, I just have a lot of concerns.
Well, and that's what we're trying to make sure, that we are in the space where our process has the weight with us as a body representing the people of Kaiser, answers the questions that we have, because the product they're gonna bring us is really, really important to our community. So, to answer your question on my evaluation, as I've done RFP evaluating on a number of different processes, sometimes my first choice is the first choice, sometimes it's not, it's always the aggregate of all the different points of view. And in this case, the top two were very, very close, you know, depending on how each of us read the proposal, and how it, how each of us, and again, we're not allowed to talk to each other, for people who haven't done evaluations like this, the evaluators aren't allowed to talk to each other, you have to do it within the four corners of the paper. That's it. You can't go Googling, you can't go call your buddy, you can't go check with somebody, that's not allowed. You have to do it based on what the proposal says, and what it doesn't say right there, compared to the Request for Proposal itself. Because it could be unfair, somebody could have put a bad review online, and it's gonna taint your point of that person's proposal. That said, there were things that probably the other evaluators and I saw just slightly differently, but would I say an all stop, because my number one wasn't the number one of the group? Personally, no, I would not, but that is my point of view, and I need, I am only one of seven. We are seven. So, if we, as a council, believe it's important for us to press pause, do another round with a larger evaluation group, that's what we should do. If the council believes that the proposal we received meets the criteria of the RFP, now that you've had a chance to read both documents, then we can decide how, which way we want to go. It is up to us as a body to think this through, and represent the best interests of the people of Kaiser. Counselor Kohler, I'm gonna go to you, you had your hand up, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Ross Day indicated that he had a lot of concerns, I would be interested in what someone's concerns were.
Counselor?
Well.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, no, it's fine. You know, I think I explained them last, last week, and, I mean, they did not even follow the law, and their, the excuse, whatever it is, it, you know, whatever they had before, sorry, it just doesn't fly with me, but, but I also understand that we are in the, we need to get this process started, and I don't want to be called an obstructionist or a micromanager again, but by the same token, I'm extremely concerned, I articulated this when it came to hiring Mr. Herr, that we were not included. In that instance, there were, what, three or four people that made the decision, two of which were city counselors. It was done completely behind closed doors, I had no idea who the applicant, none of us did.
So, can I press pause? Can we focus on the matter, the question at hand? I understand, I understand the context, but on the, the question at hand is.
What are, what are my concerns? I know, and here's where I'm going with this, is that my concern is that, I wanna know, does Prothman understand that all seven of us are supposed to be included in the process? Well, you're nodding yes, this was the same thing I said after we were told, this is who we're hiring for interim manager, city manager.
I understand.
And we were told, oh, no, next time, we'll include everyone in the process, the next step of the process, what happened? We weren't included in the process. My concern is, does Prothman understand that they are supposed to include all seven counselors in this?
So, let me answer, let me ask somebody to answer that question, or at least address it, if I may, and then we'll come back to the other question, because I want to address these in a sequential fashion. So, Mr. Pina, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, because you've been involved in researching the RFPs that other cities have used, and that we used, and the inclusion of the city council, how does that work in the processes that you have been reading about?
In the processes I've read about, and also the ones I've been involved in, in my prior jobs, the, whoever the hiring entity is, and in this case, it would be the council, who is the supervisor, is involved with the executive recruiter from the point in time that they come in the door and start that planning process. The way I would presume that to have occurred, if we awarded this RFP, or when we do in the future, I believe it was set up that two days after signing the contract, the executive recruiter contacts the organization and begins the work. From that point onward, the council would be the directing body for the RFP.
So, in terms of interviewing city council members, involving, getting input from all seven, it would not be a selection, it would be all, plus some of the other city staff, and then community organizations, inputting together the profile for the, for the recruitment?
It would be whatever the council defines, whether or not that's in the RFP process, or is defined after the fact, they will follow whatever it is we direct.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I actually have some direct experience with Prothman, and I say that not as an advocate for Prothman, I've dealt with a lot of different recruitment firms over the years, and I believe there's any number of them that could do a good job for you. But I can tell you precisely what Prothman did in Toledo, less than two years ago, when I was replaced there. They came, their representative came, he sat down with the city council, in an open session of the council, there were members of the public were there, and Toledo's kind of a small place, so it wasn't a huge crowd, but, you know, he went over, their representative went over with the council, some of the issues that they might want to be, you know, concerned about, what are some of the issues involved in doing a search, and asked them pointedly, you know, as a council, what is it you want, basically, in your search? How much public involvement? Who do you want on your interview committees? You know, the full range of questions that you would ordinarily have in trying to conduct a search for a city manager. I think anybody would do that, any professional would do that, and, and I think as Ms. DePina pointed out, is, they're gonna respond to what you tell them to do, basically. I mean, they have, they have a very strong interest in wanting to please you, because you're gonna be their next reference, or their next group that says they're not capable, so, that part, I think, is easy enough to do. I think the bigger question, and I mean, I don't want to preclude whatever it is you want to do, but, you know, is everybody fully on board, having, given that there were some strong feelings that this process was tainted somehow from the beginning? And if not, then, you know, that there is a cure, which is do another process, that is, you know, that can't, you can't argue isn't inclusive, by having the city council as a whole service of review board. It's unusual. It's unusual, but, you know, you've only hired a city manager really once in the last 20-plus years, so it's not, it's not a normal activity anyway. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Pina?
The one other thing that I would suggest is, in agreement with City Manager Hare, I would say it makes sense from everything I have heard so far that you do go back out and run this again, with whatever parameters you guys want to use for how the candidate entities are going to be assessed. And you're going to have to be very clear at every step of the way, exactly how much participation you want, and what is that going to be as an impact on the timeline? Because you guys will, I think, initially want to be involved in everything, but at some point, you may determine that only some of you are going to be involved, so that you don't have to pull every single person in every step of the way. So that's something I just throw out there for you guys to think about and keep in mind, and I would say, and I will help with this too, continue to ask the executive recruiter, what impact on timeline will it be if we do this versus this versus this, so that you have that knowledge upfront?
Thank you.
Okay?
Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I'm understanding you right, Mr. Pina, is that if, if we went with the company that was successful with the RFP this time, we could still dictate, this is what we want to have done?
That is correct. That was our, I believe it was all of our impression of the way that things would be going. The assessment that was done was simply an administrative assessment of, here's the material that was provided, did it hit all the parameters of the RFP? As you heard Mayor Clark say, we didn't have conversations, we weren't waiting, this is the best company, this is the second-best company, we were simply going down the list and saying, did it meet these parameters? No intention that that process would be in any way sitting down with the executive recruiter and saying, here's how we're moving forward. All of that would happen with the council. That is really the first step of the process.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not really off the subject, it kind of gets to Counselor Day's point, too, is one thing that I did change in the RFP, and it was kind of subtle, is it talks about stakeholders, taking stakeholders' comments to come up with a process, to come up with the qualities, et cetera, you want in the city manager. And the way it was written originally was that the search firm would go to the various stakeholders, staff, chamber, business, citizens, council, and come up with the qualities of the city manager. And I said, no, the council decides. You take all that input, and that input, they assist in getting that input to council, but ultimately, the quality, you take that input and the council decides what the qualities of the city manager, what are you looking for in the city manager? And that's what changed that I did make from the template. The point being that you guys drive the process.
And just to refer in the template itself, it was section 3-5, F, describe how the firm approaches collecting feedback from key stakeholders prior to recruitment, including but not limited to city councilors, city leadership, neighborhood associations, educational partners, business and industry, social justice, civic organizations, faith communities, and other community organizations. So by making that criteria more robust, as each of the evaluators read the response of the proposer, those are the things that we were, we were running side by side in doing our evaluations. But, that aside, the real question is, you know, is there something else we would change in the RFP, aside from the number of evaluators, that would make a difference in the types or quality of proposals that we would receive from companies that are writing proposal to do this work for us? If so, what is that? If not, you know, what are the other issues that we need to address to make sure that this is a successful recruitment? Or are we going to finish this recruitment? It's up to us. Is there something that you would change, aside from the number of evaluators? Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, well, I appreciate Counselor Day's concerns, and I actually agree with some. I think that I'm focusing on, once the candidates are here, that's what I want to spend more time on. I mean, I, I trust the process, and I'm kind of used to being out of the loop in some things, but I, I think we're kind of, in my opinion, we're dragging this a little longer than we should. I think we should move on and go with what Counselor Day made some good points, and that's been addressed already, and I think that we should move on to the next, you know, if you're going to open it up, let's do it then. But if we, myself, I've just, you know, we've changed some criteria or whatever on the RFP, and I think that we should just move on with what we have. And that's just my own opinion. I think that the focus, that I want to focus on is, once we get the candidates, have good input and be included in that, and that's my concern. I don't want to, myself, spend, you know, most of the time here on this. We're kind of spinning the wheels away, in my opinion.
Thank you.
That's what I meant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I don't know how I could have been more clear on June 7th, when I said, when we were told in a resolution that we were hiring Mr. Hare as interim city manager. I think, in fact, I know, I mean, my point, that we should all be included in the process. That did not happen, again. My concern is that, you know, fool me once, shame on me. Fool me twice, shame on you. My concern...
Other way around?
Okay, well, the point is, my concern is that we, there is a, it's no longer a one-time thing. This is, this is, this has not happened twice in, what, a month and a half, that the city council has been circumvented. I mean, that's just the bottom line. We've been, we've been frozen out of the process. Staff has driven the process of hiring their boss. After last week, we were told, well, we don't want to be in a circumstance where the employees are hiring the employer, which is exactly what was happening. That's my concern. My concern is, we have, whoever we hire, it doesn't matter who we hire, that that's what's going to happen in this process. That's my concern. And it's a legitimate concern, because that's what's happened in the first two steps. After I explicitly made that point on June 7th, it went in one ear and out the other. We don't care. We're going to go ahead and do it. And, and the ball was dropped.
So...
So I'm fine, I'm not fully behind him. I'm not going to, I'm not going to suggest that I am. I'm not. I'm willing to support it, to get the process moving, but it better, something better change. And I'm looking at everybody in the room. Something better change, and include all seven councilors. It's not staff's decision, period. It's the council's decision.
Thank you.
It needs to be an open, public process.
So our decision, so our decision point now is whether to put a motion on the table for either reopen the process, or to accept the, to move forward with the Prothman contract. Council President Smith, dealer's choice.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I apologize, because I was absent on that Monday, so I have not actually had any part of the conversation thus far. I do have a couple of questions, though, since I hadn't had that option. My first question was, when this went out as a request for proposal, and forgive me, I don't work in government, never have, how does that work? Who did you, do you, like, call those different firms and say, hey, we've got this going on? Like, how does it get out to this lovely list, by the way, thank you, of all these different firms? How does that occur?
Well, it's sent out to the firms, it wasn't sent out to that entire list, but it was sent out to several firms, and it's also published in the Daily Journal of Commerce, which most of those firms watch carefully, it's a national advertisement. So that's, that's how it's sent out.
And is it legal to specifically, like, you know, X, Y, and Z is a great company, they've had great success? Is it legal to call them and say, hey, by the way, we have an RFP? Are you allowed to do that?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you tell a company that might be interested that, can you recruit for the RFP?
Oh, sure, yeah.
You can do that, okay.
Yeah, you can...
Did we do that at all?
Oh, you mean actively try to, hey, please, please apply?
Well, no, just inform them, or say, by the way, are you allowed to do that?
Yes, I mean, you can allow, you don't recruit, though. That's, that would be wrong, but you could certainly...
Not recruiting the people, but what I'm saying...
You could certainly say, hey, we're going to be sending an RFP, you want us, you know, just look for it, or we can send it to you, or whatever.
Okay, so you can actively call a company that you might want to actually get, have them participate in the process? That is legal. Okay. The next question I had was...
Let me press pause a little bit. Also, companies, they actually sign up, not necessarily with us, but maybe they do. But if, do we post with what you speak called ORPEN? When we do...
Nah, something like this, no.
So on a state level, they actually put that out there, and companies will actually go ahead, and they put in to be pinged when RFPs come up that match their skill sets, so they will know that those have come up. So that, there are mechanisms in place for doing that. So you don't end up trying to apply for something you're clearly not qualified for.
Well, that's good. Item, the next item I had was method of selection, and it says it should be comprised of at least five members, as you were saying. And the selection committee should have been comprised of the, the three that actually then did the work, we missed the two.
Yes, and I just make sure, because you weren't here last time.
Right.
That was a typo.
Oh, okay, that I did not know.
The template, the template that we used had five members. And after a lot of discussion internally, and we've done five, we've done as few as three, it's more typical, I will say, for five, but, you know, we said, you know, we can't really come up with five, and it seemed to make sense to do three. And so we agreed, three. And, you know, the RFPs are done by staff, so, but the five didn't get changed to a three. So it listed the three members, the mayor, which was by resolution, you folks delegated to the mayor, so the mayor, HR, and finance director to be the three, but the five didn't get changed to a three. So it listed those three, and it, right above it, it says, the five, these five members, and then it has three on it. It's not a, it's not a fail or critical error. It's unfortunate, but I don't know, it doesn't really change anything.
But it went out like this?
Yeah.
Okay, because I read it as, I read it as, there should be five, and these three need to be on it? That's how I'm reading it. And again, I didn't even, I hadn't even had the chance to watch, I just overheard like the recap of the last meeting. So if I'm repeating things, I apologize, I'm just looking at it from, from my perspective. So I thought, that means that if it did fail, and I've heard now this, the city manager and the head of HR both say, we recommend it goes back out, we need to redo this, and I take both of their opinions very seriously, they know this job better than I do, would it make sense to go ahead, reopen it, and add in Counselor Kohler and Counselor Day? Could you have two more councilors on that, since it's...
No, all seven. All seven.
Oh, you don't need to put me, I mean, I do recruiting all the time, so, I mean, there's going to be certain amounts, like, we have work groups and such like that, that if there needs to be five, it was written like that, we add two, and then you guys can come back. I don't, I trust you guys to make the decision, but maybe those extra two signs. Thoughts?
If it were me, and if you're going to go out and redo it, and given that there have been questions about council members being excluded from the process, why not do seven? It's, we're not talking rocket science here, we're talking about looking at some criteria, rating the quality of the proposals in your best judgment, and you can do it. It's a little unusual, but as I said, this is a bit of an unusual thing for a city council. You don't do this. Ideally, hopefully, you don't have to do it again for a long time. And so it's the only cure I can think of for what has been deemed kind of a bad process. So...
And my concern, and I agree with you, my concern is, at this point, it's been so stirred up that the community is now wired up about it, and I'm getting that feedback. So even if we sit here and say, oh, everything's great, let's move forward, the can of worms is out, the can's been dumped over. We got to resolve that, because now you're, there's, we're going to continue to have a problem as we go down the path, unfortunately, because of, you know, people now feel insecure about the process. And that's just my opinion, I apologize again, last week I was not feeling well, but that's just my recap of what I'm seeing at the moment.
And, and as I said, I think if that's the case, it's just all, that much more of an argument for taking more time with it, and having all seven members involved in the decision, so that there's no question in the future.
And I just follow up with that, that everybody needs to be prepared to, probably, as a council, move quickly, and you're going to have, you're going to get called in on short notice for meetings, and we need to make that a priority, then.
And to get your homework done.
Yep.
This is going to be a top priority. When you're given those proposals and the RFP, you're going to sit down and crank that homework out. That's very, very important, and getting the scores done, getting the rankings done, because there's two rounds, there's two sections to it. There's the proposals, and then there's the cost proposal. So you have two, two sets of homework, just so you know. Okay. I'm going to go Counselor Reed, then Counselor Kohler.
Oh.
Counselor Reed.
So just to get an idea, how much time investment are we talking about for, you know, what kind of, you know, if we are all going to be committee members on this now, at this step in the process, what kind of, you know, what kind of time, how many hours are we expecting to, that, from both staff and from councilors?
I'm trying to remember how long it took me to go through them.
You only had three.
I know, I know, I had three.
You could have, you could have more, but, and you and Michelle and Tim have better ideas than me.
I can respond to that. It took me three to four hours just to review the proposals and rank them. So it was half a day just on that. Now, that's just that piece of the process. If all seven of you want to participate in every single part of the process, depending on what every single part means, you're going to be committing a significant amount of time. Obviously, the executive recruiter is going to do a good portion of that work, that's why you're paying them. But you have to have the time coordinated with them, and be available when, you know, have a coordinated time between you and them, so that whenever they need the update, or the redirection, or the new information, that you're able to feed that to them. And when they provide you material, you'll have to be very responsive in getting back to them as a group very quickly.
So, I think your question is, how much time for the actual evaluation of the proposals?
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yes, yes, that is true. And then I just kind of wanted to throw out there, in other situations where we are all required to do homework and get things done, how successful are we in generally getting that done? I'm asking just...
We know.
I'm just, you know, for like evaluations, you know, every year that we do that. That takes a lot of pushing and pulling, at least a two-week timeframe, in terms of getting people the information and getting it done, and, and that is probably, I would say, based on what you said, about half the time that it takes to do this.
I would respectfully say that you have a very high interest level in this topic. So I think that's going to push, I anticipate, all of you to prioritize this. And what I was trying to say earlier, which I may not have been completely effectively saying, but will repeat again now, is as you move forward, you start with all seven of you reviewing these RFP submittals. Each time, all seven of you have to get together to do something is an opportunity to say, do we need all seven of us to do this? Maybe only three of us need to do this, or four of us can do this? And you'll start, I think, naturally deciding, where do you want to spend your time and energy? And how much time is it going to take if you try to all seven do each thing along the way? But that's a comfort level you guys are going to have to get to, because you're starting out now with, I think rightly so, let's everybody participate, and then find out where our comfort level is with who does what as we go.
And I think that'd be something that, as we go through the process, we'll begin to, among ourselves, begin to delegate among ourselves. So I think that that's when we get into the actual recruitment process, but this is just to get the successful proposal and to sign a contract. So that's the only part of the conversation I really want to focus in on right now. We know that this will be that along the line, but, right now, we have to make a decision. Go with Prothman, go back out. That is the decision we have, I believe, we are, we need to make tonight, in all fairness to ourselves and to our staff. Okay? That's the decision before us. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So...
So, I personally am not as concerned about who our recruitment person is, as that then, once that person is hired, that, and we start to get information back, that we are all included. I'm more concerned about that we're all involved in the evaluation process of the candidates than I am the recruiter.
So, are we ready to put a motion on the table, and then debate it and vote one way or the other? Or is still a question out there? Councillor Day.
There's another issue that's, you know, that I brought up, and it got poo-pooed, but I'll bring it up again. You know, I have a concern as well, that references were only informally checked, that we haven't done a background check on Proffman Company, or whom, or anybody. I mean, not that I think this is even remotely true, but, I mean, is there something out there that's, you know, that we, we should have known about, that we don't know about right now, that if we did know about, we would want to know before we made a decision? I mean, there, that, those are the other concerns that I have. And I was told, well, this is not normally when we do it, we do it after we sign the contract. Well, you sign the contract, you're stuck.
So let me press pause, and let's address that question, if we may. Once the successful proposer is identified, and we go into negotiations of the contract, can you talk about the background check and reference check process, please?
Well, as I had indicated in my email to councillor Day, we don't do background checks on most RFPs in one like this. The only background checks we would ever do is if we had a police vendor who had to have siege clearance, there'd be a background check. So there's no background check done. And I would agree with councillor Day, the references are fairly informal. Proffman's a known quantity, and I don't have that stuff in front of me. My indication was, council was looking pretty seriously at just starting over, so I talked to Wes about, well, do we need to, to do this before the packet, which we do last week? And he said, no, if you go the other direction, we, you know, we could come back. So, but, you know, we checked with a couple of other cities, and they were satisfied with their work. I would agree with councillor Day, it was fairly informal, we don't really do a bunch of formal reference check. It's not like hiring an employee, especially like hiring a police officer, for example. You know, it's a vendor. So, I mean, if, you know, if the council feels that's important, then, you know, that would be an issue, and then you'd have to address that.
So the references are included in the proposal, as asked, and they also make references, because they, all three of them listed cities or counties that they had done work for. And so those also serve as references, you can, now, again, you're not supposed to go and Google this while you're actually doing the rating of, as I understand, that's the rules, I understand, for, for grading, or evaluating a proposal. But once the top proposer is selected, you can go and validate the claims that they did those recruitments, and also their success rate, because the two that had done recruitments actually also included their statistics for successful placements. And, because they had done enough of them to be able to provide those statistics, so that was in there. But in terms of doing a formal reference check process, where you call the certain cities or counties' previous clients, we don't, on this one, you wait, you do it for the top proposer, and then go back and check and validate that what they told you is true, before you move forward with the contract. And what I'm hearing is that councillor Day would like to see a more, a clearer direction on doing the reference checks prior to bringing the contract to, for approval. Is that what I'm hearing, did I hear you here correctly?
What I'm, let me make, I'll be, I'll do this as plain and simply as I possibly know how to do.
Okay.
It makes no sense to sign a contract with somebody and then do...
That's not happening.
No, and, we're talking the other way around.
No, 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 we're, we're doing, no, we're not. We're being asked to pass a resolution for the city manager to go ahead and sign the contract. We're being asked, without us knowing, before we're being asked to vote on it, about any of this information. That makes no sense to me. Why, why anybody, it's government think at its best, why anybody would think that's okay? It is beyond me, because in, in private business, I mean, I would do it, I would never tell my clients, go ahead and sign that, and then we'll check them out later. Not in a million years.
I don't think anybody's talking about doing that.
That's exactly what we're doing. You're, you're saying, you're telling us, you're asking us to give Mr. Hare the authority to enter into a contract. Once we give him that authority, we have no control over it. Okay? So he could sign it, and I'm not saying he will, he could sign it two minutes after we vote, for all we know, or he could wait two years after we vote, for all we know.
If I may, Madam Mayor, so are, what you're saying, councillor Day, is that you want to, you and the other councillors want to actually look at the references?
No, I just want to know, were the references checked? And all I got last, all we heard last week was, we didn't do a background check, so we don't know if these guys are, you know, everyone told, you, you, many people have said Proffman is a well-known entity, and all this other stuff, fine, I'll take you out, or... When I asked about reference checks, I was told, oh, well, it was more kind of informal, you know, kind of thing. That just, to me, it, it's no way to fly a boat. I just, I just, I just, it makes no sense to me. But maybe it's not supposed to, I don't know.
Well, thank you for raising the question. So, what I'm hearing, though, if we do the, if we redo the processes, that's the direction of council, that we're also going to give direction on receiving the information on background, and how many of the references do we want checked? I mean, we asked for how many in the RFP?
I don't recall, I'm sorry.
I thought we asked for three.
I believe so.
Okay. And that, that be included in the staff report, checking on those three references I checked with, and they said, to include that in the recommendation. And I think that's the piece that I understand from councillor Day, that, that was missing in the staff report we got, for the contract. Am I, did I get that part right? So that was not in the staff report, and that was the question that was being asked, and we couldn't answer it last time?
Right. It's typically not in the staff report.
Okay. So that is something that will give a level of due diligence, that would show that, yes, three references were asked for, the three references were called, and here's what we found out. Is that, did I describe that sufficient, that the level of, of reporting back out prior to bringing us a, a contract? Did I get that right? Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And had those for, and, and it sounds like it was an all-stop, so we haven't done that in this particular process? Is that correct?
There was some checking of the references, I don't have it currently.
Okay.
We were under the impression the council wanted to redo this, and I wanted to say, because I hadn't an opportunity to do so, I don't disagree with Wes or Michelle, if council feels uncomfortable about the process, and wants to start it again, I don't think any of us have a problem with that. My only issue is, is really the discussion about the secretary of state's authorization issue.
Okay.
But certainly, if the council doesn't feel comfortable that the process wasn't done carefully enough, and you want to redo it, I don't have any difficulty with that, except for the downside that Wes indicated in terms of the delay. That's totally up to you folks.
Right. Okay, so we've got, we've resolved the, the question around the registration, we've now clarified that upon selecting a, or grading for a top candidate that, well, first of all, we also said that the entire council, our reviewers, said that reference checks will be reported back out, we're asking for three, to include that in the recommendation from the top candidate, prior to, or included in the materials for a contract. Do we miss anything? We're going back out? Or we're going to go forward with this one? That's the question now. So anyone want to put a motion on the table? I won't make councillor Smith do it unless she wants to.
Do we need to make a motion? Can we just, can we just come back on the seventh? And if we get all that information, and everyone feels comfortable with Proffman, and we, we vote on it at that time? I don't think we need to make a motion for anything.
I, I would think, I would like to formally direct staff on this matter, so it's clear what our direction is, to give them a level of comfort, so they know exactly what we're asking for, unless we want to do it by consensus, if we have that level at this point, and I'm not entirely sure. So maybe we can kind of run down it, but I'm going to go to Mr. Johnson first.
Well, maybe council discussion at this point would probably be the most useful. I think what councillor Day is getting at is if, and I don't know for sure, because you guys haven't voted, it's a problem sometimes, trying to guess what, what direction you might go before a vote. I think what councillor Day, and you can jump in if you want, is saying is, if these things are resolved, is the council looking favorably on the idea of sticking with Proffman? And if, if the, I think your threshold question really should be, do you want to start the process over, or if these questions are resolved, are Proffman okay? Because I think what the mayor is getting at is, and, and the reason why we chatted right after the meeting last week about, well, should we wait three weeks because of the extra week there, or should we look at bringing this issue up, and, you know, if three councillors want to meet, we can meet, is if you want to redo the process, we can save two weeks and start that. If you want to go with Proffman, if your questions are answered, you can do that, you know, i- if you want to have those questions answered, then it's just two weeks, and it's not that long, we can certainly do that. But if, if the answer's going to be, regardless of what you find out about Proffman, we think the process should be started over, well, you can save a couple of weeks that way, too. So, it's up to you folks on how you want to do that.
Mr. Hare?
Madam Mayor, again, there's a good argument to be made about just proceeding and, and, you know, answering some of the questions, but I, I think the compelling argument here is, if there is a belief, and it's an ongoing belief, that council members have been excluded from the process, and I've heard that, I've heard that very clearly, from several sources now, the only cure for that, the only way you can fix that, is to go for a new process. Otherwise, you know, you're liable to keep debating that issue, instead of focusing on the issue of, you know, who should we hire as a city manager? And I, you know, I mean, I don't really have a dog in this fight. I mean, I guess the worst punishment is, is that if you delay the process, I'm here longer, but I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to be...
I hope that's not a sentence.
No, and it isn't. And, and I'm, I really, I do not care which firm you, you might ultimately go with, I, I mean, I think there are a number of qualified firms out there, any of which could do the job for you, but I just think it's a bad start if you have a, a lot of lingering concerns, and particularly some resentment over things that occurred in the past. It's not a bad idea to get that all behind you and say, hey, we're going to go forward with a fresh start. Now, if you're all willing to say, eh, no, all we need to know is that, you know, you've checked Proffman's references, and they're, you know, they'll do a decent job for us, and, 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 and most importantly, is that if the staff comes back at the next meeting on the seventh and says, yeah, we checked references, we've got three positive references, and I can tell you right now, as far as I'm concerned, you've already done that, whether it was formal or informal, but if you want a, a more formal listing of who you checked with and what they said, you know, we could certainly do that, is that going to be enough? And more importantly, is it going to mean enough to make everybody feel good about what you've done and where you're going?
Mr. Hare, I absolutely agree. We've got to, we've got to have confidence collectively in our process. We have to have confidence that the selection we're making here, the process we're engaging with, is going to be pushing together, together, pushing ahead together, and if there are doubts, if there are feelings of, well, I'm going to wait and see, then it is in our best interest to go back out. And I think that in, for the fairness of the process, we need to make that decision, or at least direct staff, if we really believe that's in the best interest of the city. If we want staff to finish the formal process with reference checks and so forth, we need to make that very clear. Mr. Pino, you had your hand up.
The one other thing I want to mention, just for the consideration of the group, is it's not just making sure that all of you are very comfortable, you heard reference earlier to members of the community are now concerned. I can guarantee you that potential candidates will also be concerned. Potential recruitment firms may be concerned. It's really important that this group feels comfortable about the direction you're going now, and can move forward positively, and that's going to help us, as a city, end up hiring a quality person.
Thank you. Councillor Coler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If, if I were going to make a proposal now, I would probably do something like this. I would propose that, that we move forward to do the reference checks, if the reference checks come back positive, and we're comfortable with that, to sign a contract, or to, to vote on the seventh for the city manager to sign a contract, to move forward. I'm not as concerned about the recruitment company as I am the candidates. But I would want to also know for sure that, as a city council, we would be involved on every step of the, of the interview process and reviewing the candidates.
Councillor Day?
And I would support that with this caveat. Again, and, and I appreciate everything councillor Coler said, and I'm with him 100% and councillor Herrera as well, I'm just going to be blunt with staff and, and the mayor, I don't believe that's going to happen. I just don't. I, I, I think you guys, I mean, Mr. Johnson just said that internally, I don't know what that means, somebody made the decision that three people were going to be on the selection committee. Right? Internally, I don't know what internally means, apparently, it's, even though we normally, it's not uncommon to have five, I don't have any confidence that that's going to happen. I have no confidence, Mr. Hare, that that's going to happen, because all I have to do is look at what's happened in the first two steps in the process.
And that's going to be have to go back out.
Okay, so I don't have a problem moving forward with Proffman, but I'm going to be really blunt with Proffman, if they call me, because I don't think they'll call me. Why do I think that? Because I haven't been contacted already. And it's not that I necessarily even want to be. What I want is, I want this process to be open and transparent, and it has been anything but. That's my concern. Decisions are being made by people who frankly should not be making the decisions, not because I'm on a power trip or anything like that, it's because this is the one decision that, Mr. Johnson, you conferred with me, the one decision that all of us will be held accountable for, and should be held accountable for, and yet, we're not being involved in the process. Decisions are being made internally. And I'm going to be real blunt with Proffman about it, or who, you know, whoever it is, because it just, I, 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 I'm still, to this day, amazed that after I, I vociferously objected on June 7th, that you guys still did this.
So...
It just blows me away.
In fairness to staff, when we do procurements, this is not all that uncommon, they are using technic, techniques and processes that are common to our procurement process. This is a very different procurement than we usually do. So I'm going to take some heat here... So I'm going to take some heat here myself because this is something I should have recognized and I did not when I was given the packets. It made sense to me because I've done this because in my day job, this is very, very cut and dried on how we do procurements and so forth. So I'm going to take some of the heat here that I didn't catch some of that, that this needed to be the process of procuring a recruitment firm that was going to need to involve the entire council. In doing a procurement, it made sense that you have three evaluators who had different expertise to bring that point of view and then rank them in making that procurement. So I'm going to take some of the heat here because that's something that I should have thought about, not from my professional point of view, but from the mayor's point of view. With that, because of that lack of confidence in this process, this is putting enough doubt into the community where even if we were to proceed at this point, we don't have the credibility in the community because the questions have been raised for us to go look at the community and say that we are going to have an open process.
I, I want to push back there. We don't have credibility in the community, not because of the questions that were raised.
No.
That's what you said.
I, I, my bad, my bad.
We don't have, let me, please, may I finish, Madam Mayor?
No, I, I understand, I just misstated because we did not do this in a way that was as inclusive, that was inclusive of the entire council. And now that we've had this conversation, we need to make sure that what we take back out to the community has the level of confidence that we desperately need, we must have for the next phase because it's the actual recruitment for this leadership position. And we got to get it right. Counsel President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at this point, do, is this a motion or do we declare it's a motion that we will send it back?
Yeah, send the staff report to the bottom.
Okay, staff report at the bottom. Is it emailed?
It's on page 25. Thank you.
Yeah, I got to get back in here. Hold on one second. Unless you want to have yours?
Yep, right there.
Okay. So I move that the Kaiser City Council most, direct staff to begin a new RFP process for an executive search firm.
It's been moved and seconded as the Kaiser City Council directs staff to begin a new RFP process for an executive search firm. Discussion. Counselor Reed.
One of my concerns in this process is by disrespecting our staff, by calling into question every little detail of every little piece of the process, we are disincentivizing candidates. I can't imagine who would want to come work as a city manager for a city who is this frankly dysfunctional. And I think we've done better than this in the past, and I think that we have done better at respecting our staff and their professionalism in the past. And yes, the, the questions that have been raised have been problematic and have caused the level of community discomfort because there, a lot of them are, are questions about minutia. There are important questions and there are questions about minutia, but all of those questions have come together to, to, to shed doubt on this process. And again, if, if we are in the process, you know, as we are in the process of hiring a city manager, we need to show the respect for that position in terms of the leader of a staff. And if we are not respecting our staff, we are not going to be able to get a city manager who will want to work here. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, signify by saying no.
No.
Hands please. No?
No.
No. Motion fails three, four. If you want to, you don't have to. If you don't believe it's the right thing to do, you don't have to. Okay. Anybody can put a motion on the table that would like to move forward or take a different direction than that?
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
So, or I guess I'm looking at everybody. Are we, are we all on the same page here? Are we moving forward? Are we going to continue to go down this path? I think it's made pretty clear, and I totally understand and respect what Counselor Reed just said. The thing is that if we do not start to work together and not doubt every single thing the staff does or doubt anything, you know, all these things, this is going to continue. It's going to continue over and over and over and over again. And I personally, I, I made that motion because I respect the staff and they just told me that we should send it back out. That's why I made that motion. Now, I bet I totally agree with where Counselor Reed is at. We got to figure this out and we've got to, and I don't care if we're here till midnight, we've got to figure this out. What do we want to do?
We do have to figure, we do have to figure this out, and I think that we have to do it in a way that respects our staff, respects us as a council, and respects this process. I think the, the company itself was almost a side issue is, you know, how this went down, how it happened. You can insert any other name in here and you're still, we're going to be in the same place because in the process, you know, I missed, I missed that in the RFP. I missed it. And I also missed that having all seven would, as reviewers, would be a helpful thing. That didn't even occur to me. Because in my, my day world, that just does, that's not how we do the, the processes. We'll have groups, different point of view, we try to get different perspectives to do the evaluation so when you're scoring, not everybody's going to be coming from the same lens. But it has created a sense of being left out, being skipped, being excluded. But I voted no because I have confidence in the process that we did undertake. I am, I'm sad, I'm disturbed that we have ended up in this place where we have to go back out because what I believe is an oversight on my part to make sure that we have included absolutely everybody in the process. But do I believe that we have selected through the process, we have done, a highly qualified firm to do the work for us? Yes, I do. I really do. I think that the, the process that we used actually yielded a quality organization with the skills to do the kind of recruitment that we need to do. Are we going to do better by going back out? I don't think so. Are there firms that are very, very good out there? Absolutely. Have I worked with them? Yes. And the proposal I read covered the same bases for making sure that you do a complete and very thorough profile for the position and the community and the match with all the, also the professional qualifications. I can't fault the result that we got, even with the flawed process. That's why I voted no. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Somebody may have to help me with this. I, I would move that we, that we advise staff to move forward with the background checks and the reference checks and that.
Do we want background checks?
At least the back, the reference checks.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I move that we instruct staff to move forward with the background checks, references. Shush, I am. We move forward with the reference checks and.
Can I make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that we instruct staff to conduct reference checks on the Proffman Company and prepare a resolution for our consideration at the next city council meeting. The resolution instructing the city manager to sign a contract with the Proffman Company.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to conduct the reference checks for the Proffman Company and bring back the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the contract. That's close enough. It's not, it's not in ordinance, I don't have to get it word perfect. Discussion. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just would want to make sure that.
You got that microphone tonight.
Thank you. We are all included moving forward with each stage of the recruitment.
On my word, I will call, make sure I booted this one. I booted it and I will own it. I will own it. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. I'm not even going to ask.
Thank you, Counselor Day.
Thank you. Are we good? The time is 8:42. We are adjourned.